I lost the connection there.
Can you hear us, Steve?
I can, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to call order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of DeKalb, Illinois this March 1st of 2021. Before calling roll, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, including those people who are attending remotely and for those people who are watching on Channel 14 or streaming live. As noted at the top of the agenda, the Governor has issued an executive order in March that allows the commission members to participate remotely. Tonight, Commissioner Member Becker has called in. For those in attendance tonight, we have set up a room, we have set up the room to meet CDC recommended distancing guidelines and executive order from the Governor. The city also made several accommodations for the public to provide comments on the agenda items. With that, I'd like to call the meeting into order, and roll call, please.
Becker?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
O'Flaherty?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Pina Graham?
Right?
Here.
Chair Maxwell?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to ask if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Klein, seconded by Wright. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Any additions or deletions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved by Wright.
I second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So moved. The public participation portion of the meeting, if anybody would like to address anything that is not on the agenda, I don't believe we have anyone, but I'm looking online. Is that correct? No? With that, I'll order, I'll move to new business. First is a public hearing, a petition by the US COC of Central Illinois LLC for approval of a special use permit for existing antennas and associated equipment on top of a 16-story building located at 507 East Taylor Street to allow for an upgrade of communication equipment by US Cellular.
Sean Kellis on Zoom is the petitioner.
Sean, would you?
Can you hear us, Sean?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead and make a presentation.
Yes, do you guys have the slideshow?
Yes.
We do.
Okay.
We'll bring those up.
So first, first page is a screenshot of the building. What it's going to look like after the installation would take place, this is a photo simulation. The antennas are stealthed in a screening material. As you can see by the arrow, it indicates the added antennas with the stealthing membrane applied to them. Next slide is a aerial shot of the proposed building that the equipment will be installed on. There's apparently a cell site there already. There are several carriers up there, US Cellular being one of them. This is just an addition to some existing equipment that is already on that site. This, in red, is the proposed equipment overlaid over the top of the existing equipment. So you can see with the red lines, it indicates the changes that are going to be made from Once again, a side shot of the proposed equipment is highlighted in red. Anything that is in black is currently existing there today. Next slide. This is just a closer view of Slide 3, but it just kind of gives you more in-depth of the changes to the equipment. Like I said, anything in red is newer proposed equipment. Brief overview of the scope of work, replacing three existing antennas, adding three new antennas, removing six existing lines of coax and replacing with a hybrid cable, adding three junction boxes, 12 radios, replacing one outdoor cabinet and adding an additional outdoor cabinet, and then obviously wrapping the antennas in the stealthing material. This outlines the battery cabinet changes that are proposed, along with the addition of the antennas on the, on the prevailing. The next several slides are just the, taken out of the special use permit that was, application that was submitted, and it addresses the points of visual interest. The only point of visual interest that was identified by the Unified Development Ordinance was the park property. This will have little to no impact on the visual aspects from the park due to the fact that this is located on the top of the 16-story building. So the changes to the visual impact will be very minimal. This is the product data sheet for the screening film that'll be used. It's a reflective material with the purpose of blending into the existing environment. These proposed antennas are actually going to be half brick and then half of the clear reflective material, so it will blend into the building better than just being all the reflective material. This is a screenshot of what the brick material will look like that's being applied to the lower half of the antennas. As you can see by one of those pictures where that's kind of half, half and half to get it to blend into the building. This is the product that they'll be using to give the appearance of the brick to match the building. Another screenshot of what the proposed antennas will look like being wrapped in the stealth material, with half of it being the reflective material and the other half being the brick pattern. This addresses the height stipulation in the UDO stating that the antennas cannot be 22 feet taller than the existing structure. These will not extend, as you can see, they're only, these are eight-foot antennas and they're only about half above the height of the existing penthouse, so they're only four feet above the existing structure. This slide addresses the setbacks. Since this is a rooftop, this tower setbacks wouldn't apply here. Lighting, there is no additional lighting being proposed. The building does not require FAA lighting, and we are not proposing to add any additional lighting to the rooftop. Fencing and security, since this is on top of a 16-story building, the fencing and security requirement is not applicable here, and landscaping would also not be applicable as it is the top of the building. There will be no noise generating equipment at this facility. There's no generator or any other devices that would elevate the noise floor higher than what is currently in that area today. And tower design, this is not a tower, it's a rooftop, so this point here is not really applicable to this facility. Proposed special use is for an upgrade to an existing equipment that is co-located on an existing building with other wireless carriers. The property is Zoned RC1, and the proposed special use meets all the requirements of the district and Article 7.08 Wireless Communication Ordinance of the UDO. As far as an detrimental value to the property of the neighborhood, there's been antennas on this building for quite a few years, and there's no evidence to suggest that it has deteriorated or been detrimental to any of the property values adjacent to this building. So we don't think that this equipment change is going to have any negative effect at all on property value or anything in the surrounding area. The size of the special use, it's on the rooftop of the building, so there's not going to be any expansion to the footprint of the existing facilities, so nothing in the, in the landscape will change as far as, you know, additional building size or bigger footprint. Everything will remain as it is today with the exception of the additional antennas mounted to the penthouse of the 16-story. As far as utility drainage and other necessary facilities, there's already power at the site, and all the drainage and sewer facilities are already in place with the existing building structure that was already there prior to US Cellular adding equipment to the roof here. So there's no additional services that will be, need to be added for this site. This one just says that it's been developed in a manner that is visually compatible with permitted uses in the surrounded area. Like I said, with the stealthing on the antennas, you know, we think that it, that it helps blend into the building and kind of minimizes the visual impact. And there's been antennas on the roof for many years. It will be operated in a manner that's visually compatible with the surrounding area, and the upgrade in equipment will provide the residents improved communication, and we are stealthing the antennas to minimize the effect on the neighborhood. And then this is a screenshot of the US Cellular antennas as they exist today, which will be covered in the stealthing material, and it will actually blend in a little bit better than you see them there today. The white kind of stands out, and these, these will blend in and match to the penthouse.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. Staff report?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Kellis went through the background very good in terms of the findings. So a little background, back in 2017, the council approved a ordinance, went through the commission to have a special use permit for this US Cellular at the building here. They didn't receive a special use before that, so they came in with some upgrades they wanted to do. City granted a special use permit. UDO requires that work with a special use permit, you got to do, start the work within two years, and they failed to do that. So they came back recently, submitted plans showing similar improvements, and we advised they needed to get the special use permit basically re-approved. So they did submit a petition, set the hearing for tonight. The applicant submitted plans. We did, he did summarize the, what's being updated regarding the, if I can get Jeff to get the slides back, what they're doing in terms of improvements with the cabinets and Those are the changes. Mr. Kellis went through where they're going to be located. We advised early on that the previous approval, about a year after theirs, T-Mobile, who's up there too, in 2018 got a special use permit, and we worked with them in terms of, previously years, the city tried to get screening around these antennas with larger screening material, and that can be kind of difficult in terms of this aesthetics and cost and moving around different equipment that you may have other carriers up on the top. So back in 2018 with T-Mobile, they came up with, there was this concealment film that kind of mirrors the sky. It's put on the antennas and part of the, the structure, the equipment, supporting equipment, and kind of seals that off and gives a, and I did the last photo. So this is the material that Mr. Kellis went through, being by 3M, kind of mirrors the sky, and they were very receptive of this. So the plans do show this material being on the equipment and the antennas, it kind of conceal that, camouflage it somewhat, or just reflect the sky. It won't be totally invisible, but it will help kind of visually the impact. So they're very receptive to that. The applicant went through the standards for special use permit for antenna facilities, which they're complying with all those, all 10 of those, and of course, we have the standards for special use, which they're complying with too. So this will provide upgrade in equipment. This will be a benefit to the residents of the city, increase communication capabilities for US Cellular customers. We did get one, we did receive one, a citizen response form from the building owner, which is the Housing Authority of DeKalb County, obviously indicating their support for the request. I did take a, this is a photo showing the, I think this shows it okay, the T-Mobile, which is, so this shows a reflect, it's reflecting the blue sky, and this is existing US Cellular with the white. They're going to put the concealment tape over there, which will look more like T-Mobile's, but this kind of shows visually how those two kind of look next to each other, so. We're supportive of this request. There's a sample motion prepared recommending approval contingent upon the following, the approval of the drawings that are in your packet, Exhibit A, noting also that the antennas to be wrapped with the 3M concealment film with the brick veneer too, as was shown by the petitioner, should be on the equipment. And then third, just that they have to submit the necessary plans and applications for, and complying with the building code, of course, as with any permit would have to do. So we do recommend approval with those three conditions.
Okay. At this point, if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak to this issue, please come forward, and there is not.
I have some questions.
Yeah, and so with that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll open up to the commission for discussion.
Yes, did I understand that there will not be anything added higher than what's up there now? Height-wise?
If we can go back to the...
Yes, that's, that is correct.
So you said you're not going to add lighting, so the lights that are up there will warn oncoming planes, for example, that these structures exist and how high they are?
I'm not sure if there's any, we're not the tallest carrier on that building. I know that we are not required by the FAA to light this location.
There's no lights up there.
So I'm not sure if there, I'm not sure if there's any existing lighting there on that building or not. It may not even be an FAA requirement that there's any lighting at all.
Well, it seems to me an airplane could conceivably...
Whatever's required by the FAA, they would have to do, and I don't believe there's any lighting up there, but if they are required, they'll have to do it. It's a FAA regulation.
Well, seems to me it'd be a good idea to have lights up there. That thing sticks up pretty high. It's the highest thing in that part of town, that's for sure.
Somebody, something makes me think that there is a signal light up, something makes me think that there is a signal light up there. I kind of an aviation nut, and so I look for them, but...
Yeah, it could, but they're not required with this petition in front of you to put additional lights or anything.
No, 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 no. I mean, not, not as it pertains to the antenna, simply the building.
In terms of weight, is there going to be a lot of additional weight up there? What's being put up there? Is it very heavy?
Well, Mr. Kellis can answer that. When they submit for the building permit, that's what's looked at, the weight load and make sure that the equipment up there, the roof can handle it. So that's a requirement they have to submit. I think they already did submit the structural analysis showing how that's going to be anchored up there, then it meets a code.
How old is that building?
Yes, there was a passing structural analysis that was done. The building passes. Being, the actual increase in loading is actually very minimal because they are removing some equipment in conjunction with this. So the net add of equipment is, the static load on the building is not, is not a large increase.
How old is the building?
It was built in 1970.
Seventy? Okay, so you're satisfied that you're not going to be adding weight that would be a danger to anybody?
Correct. The engineering firm has done their, their rigorous analysis, and they have, they've cleared the, the equipment, and the building will support the, the additional change in loading.
Okay. Well, I still think there should be light up there. I would think that could conceivably be an accident waiting to happen.
We'll take a look at it and see if there's...
I don't have any other questions.
I wanted to know if, what are the, what are the benefits? What are, what are these upgrades going to benefit this project?
The biggest change in the performance of the system is going to be that the radios are closer to the antennas, so the latency or the delay between the time to transmit and receive signals is shorter. So it's, they're using fiber optics to interconnect the, the radios and the antennas now. So this increases the data speed or the amount of data that they can process in any given amount of time. So with everybody on, you know, video chats and Zoom meetings and, and everybody being, doing a lot of data on their phone, this actually increases their, their data capability and improves data speed. So the biggest change that you're going to see is just faster data services.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, if not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Sure.
Moved by Wright. Second, please.
I got to read it first.
Read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Based upon the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission for this finding of fact and recommend to the city council approval of a special use permit for existing antenna and associated equipment on top of a 16-story building at 507 East Taylor Street to allow an upgrade of communication equipment subject to the following. One, the antennas and equipment upgrades shall comply with the drawings dated 2/12/21 indicated on Exhibit A. Two, panel antennas be wrapped with 3M concealment film and 3M brick veneer wrapped to match existing building. Exposed framing members on the, on the proposed gamma sector mount to be wrapped with 3M concealment film. And three, the applicant is required to submit the necessary application and plans to the city in compliance with applicable building codes and regulations of Article 7.08 of the UDO Wireless Communications Ordinance.
So moved by Wright.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by McMahon. All in favor say aye.
Let's get a roll call.
Oh.
Becker?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Pina Graham?
Right?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item is a public hearing, petition of the city of DeKalb to allow two-family or multifamily attached dwellings not meeting the minimum lot requirements as a special use in the TFR and MFR-1 districts to remove the allowance for multifamily dwellings not meeting the building height requirements to apply for a special use in the MRF-2 district. And with that, staff presentation, please.
Yes, thank you. The city is the applicant in this text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. As the chair read into the record, the, what the hearing request is, it's basically to allow two-family, multifamily attached dwellings not meeting the minimum lot area requirements, having them listed as a special use in the TFR two-family and the MFR1 multifamily, multifamily district. We also have a small amendment to the proposed for the MFR2 district to remove an allowance for multifamily dwellings not meeting the building height requirements to apply for special use. If you look at the Exhibit A, the actual changes, right now in the TFR, two-family attached dwellings not meeting the, currently, there's a reference to an article section that a couple of sections later, that doesn't really make sense. We sense, or looking back, we did some digging, there might have been with the updates to the UDO here and there, that there might have been incorrect reference to a past article number, but we think the intent, because in MFR2, you can apply for a special use permit if you don't meet the minimum lot area. So you can do in that district, but you can't in the TFR MFR1. So we would kind of think the intent was to allow it as the, in the TFR2 and the MFR1. So it doesn't state that specifically, but, so that's what we're proposing, to kind of clean that up, to make it clear exactly what is allowed for that special use. So in the TFR, it's simply the two-family attached dwellings. That's basically two dwellings next to each other or one above the other. If you don't meet the minimum lot area, you can apply for a special use permit. The minimum lot area in the two-family TFR district in the MFR1 is 7,000 square feet. So we do have some lots in the city, the older lots, that are not that size, they're underneath that. So this came up in a couple cases where there was interest, or there was a two-family or multifamily that became non-conforming because they were abandoned for more than six months. So in our UDO, that's the requirement if something's legal non-conforming, that can continue, but if it's done away with or abandoned for more than six months, then it has to, when it comes back, it has to comply with the ordinance, and there was a few that were, couldn't do that, and they needed a relief, so to speak, on the minimum lot area, they couldn't meet that. So to get the two-family, all they could do was single-family. So with the, there is a variance you can apply for, for a minimum lot area, but that only allows a 20% reduction. In these couple cases, they couldn't even get to that. So we thought, let's make those a special use. This will, you know, obviously kicks in a public hearing, notification to surrounding property owners, get their input. There's findings of fact for special use. We just went through the previous hearings, so they have to meet those requirements. So this amendment, we believe, allows some non-conforming residential structures the ability to reestablish themselves, get a couple dwelling units in there, maybe not the full what they had before, but allow some potential buyer to repurpose a structure, perhaps, in these smaller dense areas at a reasonable cost to do that work and get some reasonable return on their investment. So I think it's a good thing, will help a little bit with the, maybe some reinvestment of some older properties to give them that chance if they don't meet the minimum lot area to apply for special use, go through that process, and be able to improve properties, you know, bring it up to code, get the parking on the site as needed. So we think this will be a, a good benefit for this, this text amendment would be a benefit to the city. So the three specific amendments are noted in the report there, amending the TFR district to allow the two-family attached dwellings as a special use if they can't meet the minimum lot area. Same thing in the MFR1, and then the MFR2, as I mentioned, that's already a special use permit, you can apply for the minimum lot area if you can't meet that. And then we're just, there's a reference to, again, the section is not quite correct. There's a reference to applying for a special use if you can't meet the height requirements or exceeding that. We're taking that out, we're proposing. Right now, you can apply for variance for height, there's no max, you know, how much you can reduce or increase that. So there's a remedy already available for, in the UDO for height issues, so that's more of a cleanup item too. So we are recommending approval, we think this is a benefit amendment to help some of the older residential areas perhaps get reestablished, and we do approve that and per the Exhibit A, which lays out the three amendments specifically. Happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Yeah, I, okay, I was just going to clarify, so, because I'm thinking of, I have friends who live in a couple of these neighborhoods where, like over by the park between Second and Third, kind of by the Greek Orthodox Church, there's some, like, almost like quarter lots there, and I know some of those homes have been two-flats, some have been single-family. So that would allow, when those homes go up for sale, that if they've been used as single-family and somebody wants to buy it and turn it back into a two-flat, they would be able to apply for a variance or...
Yeah, the, some of these neighborhoods, maybe that one, north and south of downtown, are zoned residential conservation, which has a little bit of different zoning background on it, but...
The ones over by Old City Hall, I know on, what is that, Franklin? Yeah, on Franklin, like, City Hall parking lot, there's those little tiny lots there. A lot of them are...
Yeah, and the RC...
The ones over by Old City Hall, I know on, what is that, Franklin? Yeah, on Franklin, like, City Hall parking lot, there's those little tiny lots there, a lot of them are...
Yeah, and the RC-1, I think that's the zoning over in that area, and that's zoning, it's RC-1, then there's a designated land use on the property, so if there was, been two-family, they can continue the two-family. Selling a property doesn't kick in conformance, so they can continue the two-family. In the RC-1 too, I think it is a special use, you can apply for, for two-family or multifamily, so that process is kind of already in place for those districts. And that covers a lot of area, the south of downtown and north downtown.
Yeah, those were the kind of situations that I was thinking of, or like was brought up, is, you know, a house, I know over by me on North Ninth Street, there's been a couple of homes that used to be two-flats, they've been abandoned, and going forward, since it's been more than six months, they would have to revert back to...
Depends what the zoning is on it, so...
Okay.
If it was designated when RC-1 was created back in the, it's been 10 to 15 years, if it was two-family back then, it's, they can reestablish back a two-family.
Okay, but it still gives...
Yeah, or if they want to increase the units, there's a procedure to request a special use permit.
So it sounds like it just improves flexibility for odd properties that we have.
The two-family, multifamily districts, which cover a lot of areas up by the university and the areas outside the RC-1 district, there's a lot of older neighborhoods in those districts too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, just came up, a couple situations where they were, didn't have the lot area, they couldn't ask for variance, and they just wanted to, just doing the single-family didn't seem to, you know, going to work for them.
Yeah.
So this just gives an opportunity to, there's a procedure for it, have the hearing, get the input, you know, we take a look at the site, get the commission's recommendation and see what the, that is, and then we go to the council for final action.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think that was the, the couple of things that I had.
I think this is a good idea, it'll avoid some hardship situations I've seen over the years, so I certainly favor it.
You actually asked a question, Ryan.
Do we have any rough idea how many homes are impacted by this?
We didn't do a count on that, we didn't analyze that in detail.
Okay, not even dozens, a hundred, anything?
I don't think there'd be a hundred, but in terms of lot area, that's 7,000. I mean, most of the lots in the city would probably exceed that, but trying to think of the older lots, it's probably not 100 or more, it's probably, well, I didn't do a count, but I don't think it's more than 100, but...
Okay, no, I was just, I was curious.
Just taking a quick look around, yeah.
Thank you.
Because we haven't had, since I've been here, we haven't had one come forward requesting or trying to do something like this. They've been, just had to reestablish, you know, what's under the underlying zoning, or they had enough lot area to get a couple units back, but we had a few recent that came up that it was difficult to even allow, see what path they could even take to get a couple units back in there, which they did have before, but they just went over six months and became non-conforming. They want to come in and prove the property, bring it up to code, do good, you know, bring improvement to the neighborhood, and this didn't seem to be a path they could reasonably take, so I think this will allow that to occur.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It certainly makes it easier, and I like the idea of people going back and reinvesting, you know. I think that as long as, I mean, obviously it doesn't, but as long as it doesn't make it any easier for, you know, non-conforming lots or smaller lots to be able to multiply what they've got now without going through the normal process, so...
Yeah, that'll be somebody controlled a little bit by parking too, so they got to provide parking on there, and so if it's so small, there's going to be limited on the number of units, they can try and get back in there.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or concerns? That I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the city council approval of the text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance as indicated in Exhibit A of this report.
Motion by O'Flaherty, seconded by Klein, roll call.
Becker?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Pina Graham?
Right?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Many staff reports?
Just an update, next meeting is scheduled for March 15th, and we do not have any hearings for that, so unless there's a platter, plan that doesn't require hearing that comes in, we'd probably cancel that, but we'll let you know the Thursday before. At the last council meeting, February 22nd, we had a few items that went through the commission, Cheeseboro School, the special use permit for that amended site plan that allowed the parking and the access drive off East Garden was approved. At their meeting on the 22nd, also the property on Gerler Road that had the potential solar garden on there, that rezoning was approved, that ordinance. And also, second reading, which the commission, I saw, I think, heard back in January, that parking lot for Naring Electric on East Locust Street, the special use permit. The council went ahead with that approval to get that allowed to be paved here this spring, get the parking off the street a little bit, help out over there, and they're going to continue the city and Naring work on some resolution regarding the semi-parking along East Locust, so that was agreed to, to work together, go forward of that. But the special use permit was approved.
Was that amended so that the exit from the parking was one-way?
What's that?
Was that, was the final drawing amended so that the exit from the parking doesn't go down the alley?
Yes, that was a condition that it, they had to turn left there to go right out to Levin Street, yes. That was a condition added, which was a commission addition. That's part of the ordinance. That's all I had.
Okay. With that, I'd like to say that I regret to say that Mr. Klein is, is going to be stepping down this month, and since we will not have a, a meeting on the 15th, this is probably the last time he will grace us with our presence, his presence. I think we can all agree that we really appreciate his perspective, and you will be sorely missed, but thank you for your two and a half years, I believe it is?
Yeah, not quite, just about.
Okay. Well, we will certainly miss you, Ron, but thank you for everything.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move by Mr. Klein.
Second.
Second of our right. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
All opposed? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening.
See you soon. Can I?
Thank you, Steve.
Meeting we had where we had two petitions.
Yeah.